Okay, Mr. Marshall. Let's see, you are the co-host of this meeting. I see 6:36. You have a full board in the house tonight. The attendees are coming in. I think you're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of July 16th, 2025. My name is Doug Marshall and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and further extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this planning board meeting will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda, posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event public access is disrupted for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I'm here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Hi, Doug Marshall, I'm present. Angus McLeod.
Present.
Do you say your last name Lloyd or Loud?
Loud.
Loud, thank you. Johanna Newman.
I'm here.
Jara Smith.
Present.
Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise and the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to re-mute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. A comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. All right, I'm now seeing the time is 6:38. We'll go right into our first item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes from our last meetings. We have the May 1st meetings from this year available for approval tonight. Jara and Angus, I think you are allowed to vote on these, but I realize you weren't part of the meeting, so you may wish to abstain. Bruce, I see your hand.
Doug, I'm just noticing, I think, that Amherst Media is not with us, and they usually are. Is there, is something unusual going on, or what's the story?
Yeah. They, I'm actually in communication with them, Bruce. They had a power outage, and they're working furiously to get up and going. So it may be just a few minutes more. But yes, I'm aware that they're not here right at this moment. I've let them know that we started. They had told us to go ahead and get started without them.
All right.
And Doug, if I may, I just want to say these minutes are actually from 2024. They are not from 2025.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Let me just.
Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome. Just in brief, as you know, Kris Brestrop has made the final move out of her office, and in doing so, a lot of things got sorted through and sifted. And I have a couple of these sets of minutes that either one of us had done a portion thereof, but the other never got their other portion done. So you will see probably another, I think there's two more sets that are like this, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, then I probably ought to ask, how close to up-to-date are we with this year's meeting minutes?
I'm working on a set from June 4th. But there are two March sets that I haven't even had a chance to start yet. So somehow I skipped over, not March, May. Somehow I skipped over May and started a June set. So hopefully I'll get them up to speed quickly.
Okay, well, you know, we had a problem a couple of years ago.
I do.
And Nate, you know, we might want to think about whether we can skip a meeting here or there just to give Pam a little more opportunity to catch up. And I realize with Chris no longer here, Pam, I assume you're doing the, almost all the work on the minutes?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, well. So.
We've definitely been in a transition. I mean, I always strive to get one set in the pocket. And we definitely have been in a transition, and hopefully we won't stay here long.
Okay, well, I appreciate all your work and.
Oh, thank you.
I try to help you get caught up, whatever we can do. So, but we do need to keep track of that, because you know, we, we could get some public complaint. Bruce, your hand is up again.
I just move acceptance of the meeting of the minutes. I read them, and now I know why it was hard for me to remember what was going on. But I do remember the meeting, and I, and they frankly didn't seem to be super consequential. So, I mean, the meetings were, I think we, we, anyway, they were pretty straightforward, so I move acceptance as presented.
Okay, thank you. Johanna?
Second the motion.
All right, anybody want to talk about these minutes anymore? All right, we'll go right into our vote, starting with you, Bruce.
I'm an I.
Thank you, Fred.
I'm an I.
All right, Angus.
I abstain.
All right, and Jesse?
I will also abstain, as I was not there.
All right, I, all right, Johanna?
I.
All right, and Jara?
I abstain.
All right, and I'm an I as well. That's four in favor and three abstentions. I believe that's four is adequate for us to approve the minutes, so. The minutes are approved, and we'll move on. All right, time is 6:43. We will go now to public comment. So if you are a member of the public and you want to make a comment about some topic that does not appear later on this agenda, now is the time to raise your hand. This is also the time I usually read the names of the public members that I can see on the Zoom participants list, so that everybody knows who's in the room. So we have 10 attendees, starting with Brad Hutchinson, Hattie Startup, Hilda Greenbaum, Jonathan Salvan, Ken Rosenthal, Maria Kopicki, Michael Lipinski, the first name Mitch, Rob Mora, and Tom Reed. So that is the members of the public. I don't yet see any hands of members who want to make a comment at this point. So I'll make one last plea, and otherwise we will move on. Okay, we will move on. Time now is 6:44, at least on my computer. We'll start, we'll start with item three of the agenda, which is a public hearing, advertised for 6:35, so we are past that time. SPR 2025-10 with the town of Amherst. I'm sorry, Pam, your hand is up?
Yeah, I just want to mention to you that Amherst Media is not quite with us yet. I've just reached out to let them know that we're ready to start a public hearing. I don't know if you want to take something out of order before moving on to a public meeting?
So so no one is, is recording this at the moment, is that right?
Well, it's not being livestreamed. We are record, whoop, let's see what was, they are live, okay.
So Amherst Media just showed up on the screen.
Yep, they've just, they were just able to join. I just wanted to make sure we didn't go through with the, with the public hearing without them, okay.
All right, so you think we're good to go?
I do.
All right, so resuming SPR 2025-10. Town of Amherst is the applicant. Location is 1046 Southeast Street at the Munson Memorial Library. This is continued from June 4th and June 18th of this year. Request site plan review approval to construct an accessible walkway and ramp with railings and modifications to the southern entrance porch and other site work, including drainage improvements and landscaping. Under Section 3.334 of the zoning bylaw, located in the RN and ARP overlay zoning districts, map 20D and parcel 49. All right, Nate, I think I'm going to let you be the kickoff here.
Sure, thanks, everyone. Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. I'll walk through this. If there's any questions, feel free to ask. So the, you know, we continue the hearing in part to allow town staff to look at it and for the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. It was formerly known as the Disability Access Advisory Committee. So Rob Moore, the building commissioner, presented plans to them. They had supported it in the past. We had, we'd applied for a grant from the state for this project. And so we applied two years in a row. And so they had seen this, but they weren't, I guess, I think the question was, you know, they hadn't seen, you know, the, the final plan. And so we just wanted to make sure they reviewed it. They supported it. They didn't have any questions or comments or recommend any changes. I will say that the town didn't move forward with the grant application. It was, the project was supposed to be completed by June 30th, and we, we didn't have time. So we actually reapplied again. We met with the state officials, and they, I don't know, I want to say they, I don't want to say they recommended that, but that's, they said what we should do. So, you know, we're going through the site plan review. The work still needs to be done. The town has funding in the capital plan to do maybe some of it, maybe not all of it. But, you know, at least we'd have the site plan and permitting done, and it would allow us to apply for other funding in the future. I will share my screen just to show the the, the plan. That this is visible for everyone. There is, there are questions. Here's the existing building in dark gray. There's a courtyard. Here, existing walkways, and the idea was to come off the, a south entrance and create a landing with a sloped walkway, a ramp, and then an accurate walkway. And the question was, could, could the walkway be curved around some existing plantings and allow for, perhaps say, a more graceful turn here, and then connect in front? And so that's what we've done. You know, I, I, there wasn't, you know, we, we tried to keep it. There's existing trees in the front here and trees here, so we really didn't want to swing it out too much or bring the whole thing out. So we didn't change much in terms of the, you know, coming off the building. It's really, you know, from this point on, there's some, you know, some curve to the walkway, and that's really all that happened since the hearing was continued.
So that's it, Nate?
That's it, yeah. Yeah, we, you know, staff went on the site again, made sure we wouldn't be raising this too much in terms of elongating the ramp, or, you know, we worked really hard just because there is a tree, a few trees down here, and there is a little bit of grade. It doesn't look like it, but there is enough that if, you know, this were to come out a little bit more, and this had a wider turn, you know, there's, you know, it ends up being, you know, inches. It could be six inches, eight inches, whatever it is. But there is enough grade that, you know, it becomes a bigger project in terms of getting the slopes right and, and earth, and, you know, topsoil brought in. So we minimized that by just having this, this curve right here. It allows for a planting bed, so the rhododendron here in the corner can remain, and it also allows for some other, other things to be planted.
All right, Johanna?
Has this plan now been approved or reviewed and signed off on by the Disability Advisory Committee? Or is it still under review by then?
Oh, no, they, they reviewed it earlier this month, and they, you know, they didn't have any comments on it. They thought it looked fine, so they.
Got it.
All right. Bruce?
Given that I was a part of the recalcitrant bunch that wanted this plan to be developed this way, rather than the way it was previously with the right angle turn that obliterated the rhododendron, this seems to be fine with me. I think it's exactly what I was suggesting that the town might choose to do. As far as I can tell, just a minute, my door has been knocked on. Mary? Isabel? There seems to be, back, back with you all again, sorry about that. There seems to be no change, other than the arcing of the walkway around the trees, so. And that seemed to be the only thing that was at issue. So I guess, except for the fact that we've got Jara and Angus joining us, whom I assume have seen the recordings on this, but possibly, I don't know. But if, if we, I didn't feel a need to discuss this any further, because the singular adjustment has been made. Everything else was fine. I would move to approve with the, blah, blah, blah.
We have other comments, Bruce, before we're ready for motion.
Yeah, okay, well, I just wanted your guidance on that, but as far as I'm concerned, it's good, I'm good to go.
Okay, Fred?
Yeah, I want to commend town staff on this. This is also what I wanted to see, and I would also point out that we did get a public comment from a person with mobility issues, and who was critical of the, the direct right angle in terms of making that work with a wheelchair. And this plainly does work in that way, so I think this checks all the boxes.
All right, thank you, Fred. Nate, I'm going to ask you to remind me. I asked, I asked last time about why this needed to have a ramp at 8.3% and why it couldn't be a sloped walkway that's, you know, four and a half percent. You know, I just find that the, when you don't have to have a ramp with guardrails, and you can use the grade, it's just much more graceful.
Right. Yeah, when, when we met with the designer review board and others commented that whether or not there was a a ramp or a sloped walkway, they would still want railings or something to offer assistance. And so, you know, it would seem odd to double the length of this, instead have double the railings or guardrails.
So there was a desire for railings, even if it's not required?
Yes, yeah, just knowing that, you know, even if it's not required, you know, going down a sloped walkway, you know, there was some comments saying that, you know, it'd be nice to still have that, right? Some, you know, folks still need assistance, and so, you know, trying to have as short of a walkway reduces material costs and, you know, gets you to grade faster. So that was the decision to be made.
Okay, thank you. All right. Members of the public, is there anyone who would like to comment on this proposal? Okay, I do not see any hands raised from the public. Board members, are there any further, any further discussion on this proposal, or are we ready to vote? Nate?
I do have draft findings and conditions I can share, if you want to walk through those.
Actually, that'd be good, yeah.
Johanna, I see I have your hand raised. I think I jumped.
Yeah, did you?
I don't know if we want to ask about this. I have, I guess, a process question. So given that like, the town will only pursue this if we re-secure grant funding for it. Is that correct? And if, if that is correct, then I presume if we were to approve this project now, then it would just kind of like be in the can. And once the grant is secured, staff could just pull the trigger on the project and wouldn't need additional, or, you know, what's the statute of limitations of our approval, et cetera?
Right, so yeah, I mean, as a, you know, one of the conditions, right, it says that this expires after two years when it's filed, and that's, so we'd have two years from the date of approval for this plan to be in place and acted on. And so, right, it really, it helps the town be ready for when funding becomes available, whether that's, you know, grant funding or capital funding. It puts us in a good position. And now we actually have, you know, we did bid it, actually. We put it out there. Bids were a little high, so we adjusted our grant application. With these plans, we have better estimates in terms of material costs and what it actually looks like. So I think we're in a much better place to move forward with this, you know, when funding is available.
Okay. All right, we have a findings and conditions. Nate, do you want to lead us through that, or do you want one of us to read it?
No, I can do that if there's no other comments. It's a simple finding that the board finds the project complies with the relevant criteria of Section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw. We often do this with, you know, some smaller projects. There are waivers in the application. So, you know, we, sometimes we require various plans as part of a site plan review. So we ask for these things to be waived, a landscape plan, a lighting plan, soil erosion, sign plan, traffic impact statement, a survey, construction logistics hazardous and pollution and hazardous materials plan, and a site management plan. And that's, you know.
Would this be signed as an accessible path? An accessible entrance to the building?
It would. So there would be signs saying that it's an accessible walkway. And then, you know, as part of the project, just to reiterate, there will be, you know, door openers too, from, you know, a few doors in the library. One would be those, the double set of doors on the south entrance. And so there'd be a push-button activator, and the doors would work. They are double doors, and so they're not wide enough individually to serve as an accessible entrance. They're not, you know, they're not wide enough, so both doors would open. There's a few conditions. We could always modify these. So condition one, the project shall be built substantially in accordance with the plans, site plan and elevation submitted to the planning board with the date of June 5th and approved on July 16th. Substantial changes to the project or substantial changes to any approved site plan shall be submitted to the planning board for its review and approval prior to the work taking place. The purpose of the submittal shall be for the planning board to determine or to approve the change, or determine if the changes are de minimis or significant enough to require modification of the site plan review approval. Condition three, the site plan approval shall expire within two years of the date of filing with the town clerk unless it has been recorded, unless it has been reported at the registry of deeds and substantial construction or use has commenced within a two-year period. So if you start acting on the permit more than just, you know, putting some dirt there, the permit is active. All work associated with the project shall be completed within 24 months from the date of issuance of the building permit. If more time is needed, the applicant shall come before the planning board at a public meeting to review a construction completion schedule and request approval of a time extension. And so those are the conditions.
All right. I'm going to follow up with one question, which I hadn't really noticed on the plan, but you mentioned the, the doors that are being accessed. You're saying the two, both leaves of that are less than 36 inches wide?
Right.
And so there's no plan to replace those with unequal leaves, with one being 36?
No, they're, you know, they're older doors. There's, they're historic doors, and so, and then also just the, to replace one or both, you know, to replace any one of them to make them wider is really replacing both. And so, yeah, the idea is to keep them there.
And Rob's fine with that?
He's the one who developed the plan, so.
All right, that's, that's not my usual experience. Usually when I have an accessible entrance that's got leaves that are too narrow, we end up replacing them with unequal leaves, and one being 36 inches wide. I assume the other, the main door to the building is wide enough and meets ADA?
So, yeah, so what I was gonna say is, all the other doors in the library, most of them that we're putting activators on are all double doors. So, you know, it, the decision was made to have all the push-button activators on a few sets of doors, rather than replace all of the doors, just to be consistent, so.
Okay. All right. All right, does anybody, Bruce?
I think I'd move that we granted the requested site plan approval with the finding as stated, with the nine waivers as stated, and with the four conditions as stated.
And close the hearing?
And close the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jesse.
I will second that.
All right. Board members, any other discussion? All right. We will go ahead through the vote to approve the site plan review for this project with the site, findings and conditions. Bruce?
I'm an I.
Fred?
I.
Angus?
I abstain.
Jesse?
I.
Johanna?
I.
Jara?
I abstain.
And I'm an I as well, so we have four in favor, three abstentions, so the motion passes.
Five in favor.
I'm sorry, Pam?
Five, five in favor.
Four. Four in favor, three abstentions.
Who was the third abstention?
Third abstention, yeah.
I thought it was Jara, was it not?
Jara and Angus, but no, no one was, no, no number three.
Oh, you're right, okay. I can't read tonight.
It's okay.
Okay, five, all right. All right, thank you. All right, the time now is 7:02. We'll go to the next public hearing, which was advertised for 6:40, so we have passed that time. Site plan review 2025-08 and special permit application 2025-01. Archipelago Investments LLC Gould Way and Lanin Lane, continued from May 8th, June 4th, and June 18th of 2025. Request site plan review approval under Section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new mixed-use development with three buildings, including 140 residential units, approximately 12,000 square feet of commercial space, 180 parking spaces and associated site improvements, and request a special permit under footnote A of Table 3, Article 6 of the zoning bylaw, to modify the front setback beyond the maximum required, building height to exceed the maximum allowed, and the number of floors to exceed the maximum allowed. Located in the BBC zoning district, map 25B, parcels 52 and 58. All right. Let's see, Nate, I see your hand. Who will be representing the applicant?
Sure, I, the applicant has requested a continuance without testimony. That was just the other day. Sure, I, the applicant has requested a continuance without testimony. That was just the other day. They, they're still working through the conservation commission, so there is nothing new to, to present to the board. I'll, I'll recommend that the board, if we would, you know, grant a continuance, it's to August 20th. We have, you know, other business to take care of, and this gives them time to perhaps get things ready for the board, so.
All right. So board members, when we have a continuance request of this type, we typically don't take any testimony or discuss the project much. So I'd like to go right into a motion to continue to August 20th. Is there a time we should?
I'd say 6:35.
6:35, okay. So motion to continue to August 20th at 6:35 PM. Jesse?
I'll second that if that was the motion.
If I, if I made the motion, okay.
Was that the motion, or should I make the motion?
That, that's fine.
Okay.
Pam, you can record that I made the motion, and Jesse seconded.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go right into the vote for that. Starting with you, Bruce?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Angus?
I abstain.
Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
Jara?
abstain.
Abstain. And I'm an aye as well. So this time I, I know that there are five approved and two abstentions. So, all right, so we will move right on. Johanna?
I have a question. If a project is kind of, you know, yeah, being continued from hearing to hearing, and we have new board members come on in the process of that, what are the criteria for them being able to potentially ultimately vote on the project and engage in the interim votes?
All right, Nate, you want to review that?
Right, because the project application, the hearing was open before they joined the board, before their term started. You know, members aren't able to vote. So even if, you know, even if it had been continued without testimony, because it was open before their members' term started, they're not eligible to vote. So we've confirmed that with our legal counsel.
All right, so I probably shouldn't have asked for their vote at all.
No, I think that's fine. The abstention is fine.
The abstention is fine, okay. But when we get to the final, final vote, we will, there'll just be five of us that can vote.
Right.
Okay, Bruce?
They can't vote, but I assume they can ask questions.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, thank you.
And Johanna?
And then how does that relate to quorum and how many people we need to vote to approve the special permit?
Yeah, so, you know, there's only five members that are able to vote. And so, you know, for any, so, you know, there still can be a quorum of members, but then, you know, what's the quantum of vote? So, you know, there's, four votes are needed for a site plan review and five votes are needed for a special permit.
So to clarify, the five voting members on the board on the project would essentially have to have unanimity on the site plan review or on the, on the special permit.
Right.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Since we've continued this to the 20th of August, and since August is a holiday period, and since we're in a tight squeeze, as we've just discussed, we would need at least four of us here to be able to make a decision. Perhaps we should make sure that I can confirm that I'll be here in, on the 20th of August.
Pam had, you know, asked members for their attendance, and so the 20th seemed like it worked for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bruce, there's actually no guarantee that Archipelago will be ready for us to actually vote on this on the 20th. They just, you know, they may ask for another continuation, or it may come back. They may be ready for us to vote, but we may not be ready to vote, so.
Okay.
We'll see where it goes.
Yeah.
Okay. Time now, 7:08. The third public hearing. Advertised for 6:45, so that time has elapsed. Site plan review 2025-11, U Drive Amity LLC, 5 University Drive. Request site plan review approval to modify previous site plan review approval SPR 2024-11 and applicable, applicable conditions for a mixed-use building to allow a sixth floor and an increase in the building height to 70 feet to allow for an increase of 30 dwelling units under Section 17, University Drive Overlay District of the zoning bylaw. Map 13B, Parcels 18, 27, 28, and 54 in the BLRD and UDOD zoning district. All right, so this is a new public hearing on a project that most of us saw multiple times last year. Tom Reedy is here representing the applicant. Welcome, Tom.
Mr. Chair, good to see you. Good to see everyone. Welcome to the new members.
So do you have a presentation for us?
Of course I do. So for the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of U Drive Amity in its request for a modification of the site plan approval that was approved, I want to say in March of this year. With me, Jonathan Salvon, architect from Kuhn Riddle, and Barry Roberts, the developer.
Um, if I could interrupt you a moment. Pam?
Yes.
I'm seeing John Armstrong on the panel. And I don't think he's part of Tom's.
I don't think he is either.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I do see Barry. Welcome, Barry.
And Jonathan.
Okay, thank you, Tom. You may proceed.
Great, thanks a lot. And so, I mean, thanks to the board and its support for and proposal of the University Drive Overlay District. As you may recall, this was a five-story building. I think everyone, planning board, zoning board of appeals was, was supportive of it. I, I think without stepping out of line, the, the planning board used this as a little bit of an example of what maybe the overlay district should allow. And so originally, we didn't think we could do six stories, but Barry went back and had a conversation with his steel provider because of the type of build that this will be. And it turned out that frankly, as a result of the six-story with the additional density, he can actually build a six-story building. And so gladly, we're back in front of you for that, really, the sixth story and the additional height, which we're availing ourselves of the, the overlay district to do. I'll, I'll show you an image on the screen in a moment of the building. If you've probably already looked at it. All we've really done, or all Jonathan really has done, is insert a floor into kind of the middle of the building, right? So the first floors are same, the top floor is the same, and then you had those middle floors. He just inserted an additional floor into that space. Everything else, site plan, building footprint, curb cut locations, number of parking spaces, lighting, landscaping, stormwater, et cetera, all the same as what you approved. And so really what we're asking for is the additional six-story to be able to go up to 70 feet. This is a passive house project, and so I think Jonathan and Barry are getting into it a little bit more. And that's why we're asking for the full 70 feet to be able to fit, kind of, I'll call it, all the nuances of that passive house design. And, and with that, we would get 102 units up from 78. It'd be 290 beds up from 225. That also increases the number of affordable units up to 12 from, from nine. And, you know, we think it's a really good opportunity for this additional story, additional housing for a really good project. So, like I said, you, you've probably seen it already, but I will show it just for the, for the public. So here you have it. This is from the easterly side, kind of the northeasterly side of the building. Same as you saw before, you know, step back is the same as it was before, about four feet. I think what, what Jonathan has done really well is kind of continued the, the maybe fenestrations of the building to, to make it seem less massive. We've got the canopies down here over the entrances to the first story. We've got the, the brick different facades. We still have in this area that open space, you know, the seat wall. The, the town, actually, Barry was able to talk with the director, the superintendent of the Director of Public Works, or the Department of Public Works. The, the town shifted northerly the roadway so that it wouldn't impact this wall or anything with this site. So we're, we're very thankful for that. It still has the multi, the 10-foot-wide multipurpose path. It has the street trees proposed, landscaping, et cetera. We've got screening still along the rooftop mechanicals. As an aside, we're hopeful that we're not going to do rooftop mechanicals. We're going to try to get them within the units, but it's something that we're still investigating. And then we've still got those outdoor areas for some of the units. I'll scroll down, same thing. This is from the roundabout, so northeast of the site. Again, you get the six stories. This one is from the south, looking southwest. Here we've got one on Amity Street. This is the screening, same as before, for the electric bank, the electric meter bank is tucked behind this landscaping. And then there's a fence there as well. And then this is internal to the site, what it would look like if you were on the southwest side looking northeast, kind of north, northeast. Again, some, some ground shots of what that front area would look like. Again, canopy, street trees, seating area. This is that, the inner elbow, if you will, seating area, some bike storage. There's additional bike storage internal to the space. And I, I think we conceive it as bike and probably electric scooter storage, because that's what you're seeing all over the place. And as a practical matter, I think we, you know, we can fit up 40 to 60 bikes in that space. But as a practical matter, there are two elevators in this building. I suspect that folks are going to be bringing their bicycles or scooters up to their room with them because the rooms are of a size where you could fit kind of quite easily that bike or scooter. So we've got that. Another rendering from the interior of the space, just kind of fit and finish and, and view. And I'll just show you the, the first floor floor plan. We've got space here that we're talking to a certain tenant, space here we're talking to a tenant, and here we're talking to a couple of different tenants for this space. This may end up getting divided, or it may stay. It's about 3,000 square feet. This is a little over 7,000 square feet, and this is 2,000 square feet. We also have the EV installations marked, and then we have the pre-wiring spaces marked. It was a request Nate astutely pointed out, and so Jonathan updated it to include the, the pre-spaces. These are all the compact spaces over here. There's 24 of them. You really want to do it in the long run, just because you, you actually, that's where you're going to gain it because the compact are a little shorter, 16 feet instead of 18 feet, and a little narrower by a foot, so it's eight by 16 instead of nine by 18. These are the same. We haven't made any changes. And again, we haven't made any exterior changes to the site. It really is, you know, when I use the word sandwiching, you know, you just put that extra floor into the building. The rest of the floors, layout stays the same, mixtures of studios, ones, twos, threes, and fours. And decently sized rooms, same as, as before. I'll go to the elevation. This is just rooftop mechanicals. If we do have to put them on the roof, we would be screening them. And this is what that aerial would look like. And then you can see right here, it would be a solid metal panel similar to what the siding is. As you can see it from this angle and over here. So that's, that's really the proposal. We're requesting a change to, I think it's six conditions as outlined in my cover letter. And they're really just a function of updating the, the plans to include the approval date, hopefully this evening. Up to a maximum of 102 units, up to six stories and 70 feet, 12 affordable units instead of nine, and then the breakdown of the affordable units as provided there, including two of them at 60% AMI and the balance at 80% AMI. I think I've covered it as far as we're concerned, but obviously we're happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Tom, if I could ask you again, I noticed in the development application report, it states that the five-story project had 78 units?
Yes.
And, and it said that we're now adding 30, which gives me 108, not 102.
Let me double check the math. I'm-
That, that could have been my, my error as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is just-
What is the right number?
I think it's 78 to 102, so I think it's, I think it's the 24 units.
Okay, so 102 units, and you said 290 beds?
Correct.
Okay. Great. I guess typically on, on a, on a project like this or a process like this, we would have a site, a site visit report. We did schedule a site visit yesterday afternoon. Three of us showed up, me, Jara, and Angus. We didn't actually walk around the site. We talked, talked about it with Nate and Jara and Angus. Is there anything you'd like to say about your experience of being on the site yesterday? We had a little discussion about where the front edge of the building would be in relationship to University Drive. But other than that, I wouldn't add anything else. Looks like no. Okay, so we've, we've checked the box for our site visit report. Board members, do we have questions for the applicant? Jesse?
Thanks for the update. I think this came up in the original discussion. Now that there's even more occupants, I'm wondering about bike racks, bike storage. I see there is a bike room, but still outside, at least on the drawings, it's pretty minimal outside. I don't know, I'd love to, wouldn't change my vote, but I'd love to see more encouragement and favorable bike storage outside as well.
We can certainly do that. No problem.
All right. Angus, I know you had a question about a couple of the drawings yesterday that I, I'm, I'm not going to take your, take that comment from you.
Sure. Yeah, I just, I noticed that although the floor plans generally seem the same except for the sixth floor, the actual size of the units varies from floor to floor. And I was wondering if someone can talk about why, or what, what I'm seeing here in terms of the square footage differences.
This is the labeled square footage of the units. Jonathan or-
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Jonathan. I'm gonna, I'll give you a little heads up, but I'm going to turn it over to you to-
You know, I, I'm not sure, we, you know, the design of the units themselves is evolving a little bit as we are repairing through the, the passive house requirements and how we're going to handle the mechanical systems. It may, if there are some subtle differences in the layout of some mechanical closets from floor to floor, I would expect them to be pretty tight. But these, these are really kind of snapshots in time. And if we had begun a process on a floor wall and we're kind of telegraphing those changes up through the building, it is possible that there is some, there is some variance between them. There is also, I don't know if it's enough to account for this, it might be. There's also a fundamental difference in the thickness of the walls when you go up. This building is, is- There's also a, a fundamental difference in the thickness of the walls we go up. This building is, is um. Primarily framed uh from floors two through six. Um, and that sits on podium. Um, and so the. Uh, first two floors of wood construction, actually two by eight. Uh, wooden studs, whereas the upper two floors. Um. Should be the first three floors, two by eights, and then the upper two floors are two by sixes. And so it'll make a subtle difference in the, in the square footage um as well.
All right, um Angus, is that a satisfactory answer?
Yeah, it's fine. It, it doesn't exactly taper. Um, and I mean, the, the sizing, they don't get smaller as they go up, so or, or bigger. There's not, not really rhyme or reason, but um, I'm hope, hopefully someone else will ask about the um. Uh, he, heating and cooling systems and how y'all are thinking of doing that within the units.
Well, why don't Jonathan?
I can ask that question.
Take that right now.
So, you know. To, to this project, the, the typical approach on a um multifamily uh. Housing project has typically been kind of a split system, um, where you'll have condensers on the roof. That's what we're usually screening up there. There'll also be ERVs on the roof. Um. And then uh kind of a, a separate set piece in this, in the units themselves, usually two or three of them actually. Uh, that actually deliver the heat or the, the cooled air. Um, there has been a change in refrigerants. And we're also bumping up against the, the honestly, the limits of what you can do with split systems when it comes to the distance. Between the condenser that's outside and the, the portion of the unit that's inside. And so they're exploring. What other options there are that, that we can work through in the, through the passive house process. That will allow us to eliminate um the longer runs, uh, especially with this new refrigerant, which is a. Considered more of a fire hazard and there are things to be in. Created chases and, and that sort of thing. So um either way. Uh, this will be an all electric building. There won't be any fossil fuels used for either heating, cooling, reheating. Site.
Hmm. Thank you.
All right, um. Um, Tom, I guess I, I'm wondering since the site plan hasn't changed, but your occupant, occupant. Numbers have changed. Um. You know, uh, do you still have enough parking spaces?
I hope so. Um. It's, you know, this is one of those and I, and I think I responded to Nate this way is that. Uh, I think Barry is, is the, the housing demand is paramount to the housing demand with parking. And so in an ideal world, we have one parking space per one bedroom, right? But that's just not possible for the site in order to get, to make the project viable. And I think it's at Barry's risk, but he. Based on his other projects believes that folks are going to look for housing, even if there is not parking there. Given this location proximate to a couple PVTA bus stops, Swift Way. You know, you walk down the street, you get CVS, you've got Big Y, you've got urgent care across the street at Cooley Dick, you've got, you know, Amherst Public House. Et cetera. And so, you know, I think. We've almost looked at, I think, uh, Johanna asked, could you reduce the parking in one of the earlier ones? And this is almost. We're getting to that, right? We've, we've reduced the parking by increasing the building. And so I, I think, yeah, we're, we're comfortable with it. Managed appropriately, given the complimentary nature of the uses with the commercial on the first floor. Being selected, like we're not putting a restaurant in there because of the hours and the parking demand of a restaurant. It's going to be things like an insurance company. Uh, maybe a grab and go spot, maybe a bank, uses like that. Um, plus.
Daytime uses.
Precisely, daytime uses. Plus, as Jesse said, you know, we do have internal bike storage. We'll add some more out, outdoor storage. And then it's really just management, you know, parking management is assigning people spaces. It's, you have a numbered space. You going into it, tenants know what parking allowances there are, you know, how many they will have for their unit. Um, and we will just assign a space because that's the way to manage it. So, yeah, I, I, I think we have enough parking managed appropriately.
Okay, uh, I see three hands raised. We'll start with you, Jesse.
Thanks, um. I had felt compelled to share that no matter, many of us during the overlay discussion hoped this is exactly what would happen. Reduction in parking needs, especially in these locations. But based on something else you just said, Tom, I now feel compelled to. Hope you won't take that approach of limiting the commercial spaces. And that they will be things that create a vibrant neighborhood type activity. So, uh, yeah, I, again, I, no control over that. I would really hope you would consider restaurants and things that not just those residents would visit, but that would be a draw for the rest of the town as well.
Yeah, and something like a cafe, you know, when I say restaurant, I think of something that's open from four to nine, four to ten, four to eleven.
Sure.
As opposed to a cafe, which might be a seven to eleven. That certainly, I mean, we're, we're actively in discussions with.
And again, I'm picking up some of the other buildings in town where there's really, there's the commercial spaces filled with things that don't give any value for the town. So I hope that's not where we end up.
All right, thanks Jesse. And, and I'll just piggyback on before we get to Jara. Um, if you're, that you have some bike sto, bike parking, bike storage, bike loops. At the front of the building for people who are visiting the building on their bike as opposed to people who live in the building. Jara, you're next.
Thank you. Um, I'm curious if the mechanicals are no longer needed, if they end up not being needed on the roof. Has any consideration been given to solar panels or anything like that?
Yeah, so we've had conversations uh with uh local solar providers. Given what's happening at the federal level, it's getting a little bit dicey. Um, we've talked about. You know, so, so this is a project, just to really kind of unpack it a little bit. This is a project where each unit's going to be separately metered. So there's, there's going to be a master meter for the common areas, the light, the exterior lights, the hallway lights, et cetera. But each of the units is going to have their own. So to have the solar panels on the roof to provide. Electricity for onsite. Probably doesn't make the most sense. So we've talked about putting it back in the grid. We've looked at what an interconnection would look like in that area, et cetera. Um, so yeah, we're thinking about it. I. I think that the roof is designed in order to accept solar, right? The way that, that we're building it now is that it's being designed so that if in, kind of like let us get our feet under us a little bit. And then let's see what happens on the federal level, maybe in three or so years, it's, it's more favorably looked at. And then we can put it on the building. So, yeah, we're thinking about it.
Great, okay, that's awesome. Um, I only, I ask in part because in my experience. Uh, you know, utility costs are. Climbing and climbing and climbing for folks. And if there's any way to add, as you said, plug back into the building and somehow reduce. The cost to um the renters, then that would be fantastic. But uh, I'm glad to hear that, that you guys have had a lot of conversations and thought about this already.
All right, thank you, Jara. Bruce.
Um. I, uh, as far as the parking is concerned, I share Jesse's views uh and, and I'm basically pleased that. Barry has decided to take the risk uh and back his judgment here because I think we're going to learn something from it. I mean, I'm, I actually. Um. Uh, this is good. This is, I think, uh, I'm very curious. And I hope you're right, Barry. And I know you've got various levers and so forth you can pull and you've been doing this for a while. So uh, I think we're going to learn something and, and I hope what we learn is all good. Um, so with that, there was a, uh, I got a rather arcane question, but it's. There was a letter in the packet from the Stantec, from the uh traffic engineer. And it, it talked about unit numbers and it talked about them going down and it was. I, I, I couldn't understand what relevance it had to the project and uh. So I want to know. Uh, why that letter was in there and what it means. It was just a two line, a two, a short, two short paragraphs, but it, it seemed to me. Do you want me to pull it up?
Uh, this was the one from Stantec.
Yeah.
January thirtieth of this year.
If you can see, read it there, Doug, the, 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 the unit numbers are heading in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
Go ahead. If I may, I think, I think Nate included it. Um. As a, as, because it had been provided initially and then updated with the modification. Our, our position is. If the parking, you know, it, it's not necessarily occupant. It is parking, that's gonna drive traffic here. And if the parking worked in that latest one letter. Uh, uh, sorry, shorter letter iteration. Uh, the, the traffic worked for that parking, the traffic will still work with this parking because the parking has not changed.
I agree, but the letter didn't say that.
Uh, the letter was not updated.
Yeah, so, so long as, so the, the letter essentially irrelevant and it's not because I didn't understand something. Is that, is that correct?
That's fair.
Good, okay, we're good.
All right, thank you, Bruce. Angus.
I just wanted a quick follow-up to what Jesse was talking about, about parking. Um, the, uh. I, Nate mentioned that uh there is some discussion of adding a crosswalk to University Drive. Um, a little bit farther down from Amity Street. Um, and if it's possible to, to work with the town to make that happen. Um, I think you, that would be then two access points, the roundabout and a crosswalk for people to cross from the parking lot on the other side of University Drive. Which I don't think has any, it has a few requirements for parking close to the shopping center there. But the rest of the parking looks like it's available. That might change over time, um, especially if residents try to park in that lot. But at least for commercial development, um, especially at night, that parking lot would be pretty empty. Um, which would make it even easier to have a restaurant there that would be accessible to people across the town.
We're happy to help. I mean, we, as, as Nate knows, we wrote a letter of support. And I think we're probably um. Pretty helpful in getting the roundabout funding because of. This project uh coming in. I mean, Nate did a terrific job. We were happy just to supplement. If there's anything we can do to help get the crosswalk, we're more than happy to do that.
All right, thank you Angus. Uh, Bruce.
Um, I heard Tom say that he was hopeful that we could approve this tonight. Um. And uh, I have to say that it seems to me uh that. With nothing changing, the, 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 the essential question before the board is. Are any of the provisions or conditions and things that we approved at the last plan? Um, do, does, does the additional number of units uh cross any thresholds? That we might uh choose to modify a condition or so forth. And I've been. And, and so with that question in mind was how I read all of this material uh prior to the meeting. And I, I have to say, I couldn't see anything that uh seemed to me to trigger. The uh, a change in what we, what you've provided. For example, you've, you've got a management plan. There's a, there's a. There's a uh, 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 an onsite manager. Um, I, there's a certain number of hours that the person's there. I mean, all of that. I, and so I went through it. I thought, well, no, that's probably good. And the, and so forth. So. I looked at the development application report, Nate, and I, uh, and the various issues to consider and I considered. As best I could, those issues from what I know. And I couldn't see anything that from my point of view was triggering uh. A sense that the additional unit count was going to tip us over. Um, so I guess my question of the board is, there was two questions I have. One is, do others, do the rest of us share that view? And if we do. Um, and we were to try and approve this tonight, typically we have uh. Um, drafted, uh, proposed, so, so findings, well, conditions and so forth. And we'd have to, if we were to approve that tonight, we'd have to generate any additional questions on the fly, which. Twenty-five years ago, when Fred and I were asked on the board, we routinely, everybody, board meeting for years, we would generate the conditions. As we were in the meeting and we would approve it and we would move forward. Uh, that's not been my experience. And my second time around for the past three years, we've had far more staff support for this. Um, so the, the question is, would we feel comfortable um. Uh, trying to adopt any other, any, any, any fluctuating conditions like Jesse's bicycle number, for example. Um, on the fly or uh maybe we could ask Nate to do it in the five-minute break. It's eight o'clock or seven fifty or something like that. But I would like to get this sort of out tonight because as I said, I don't see that this project. This additional floor has pushed us out of any of what we've previously. Um, determined as being uh reasonable for the project.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, I guess I would just say, I, I would hope we can go through the development application report before we. Uh, conclude certainly. Uh, Nate raised a number of questions in that, so. Um, I think we should at least review those. Nate, I see your hand.
Sure, yeah, I also have a Word document with draft findings and conditions. You know, it, it, it uses the ones Tom referenced in his, his cover letter. And then there are a few others, um, you know, that could be added. I think it would be important to clarify, you know, uh, I just, the previous decision to me didn't clarify the demolition and phasing and how that works. And I would want to just have a condition that did that in terms of, you know, is. You know, is the incharter building going to remain? And then, because then there's a, a use that's happening in addition to the overlay use, this mixed-use building. Uh, you know, there's been discussion about having a certain amount of commercial parking or non-residential parking for. Uh, and you know, in the narrative it mentioned, there could be twenty-nine, it could be more. The board may want to have a minimum number that they assign as a condition available to the um, non-residential spaces. I can share the screen, I think, to the public and unobstructed. So I mean, it's a kind of minor and. I think that was really it. It's just, you know, are there things from this discussion, like uh, the bike, uh, outside bike storage too that could be added? But really, there, there's not a lot to change. I agree. Uh, but if there's anything else that comes up during the discussion.
Okay. So, um. Does anyone have anything to say before we at least breeze through the uh development application report? Okay. All right, Nate, do you want to do that or do you want me to read that? Nate, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I, I'm sharing the delone application report now, if that's visible for everyone.
Yeah.
We can start at the beginning, you know, there were, so this is a modification to a previous site plan review. So, you know. Uh, anything that's updated in terms of the plans or conditions are in effect as are the previous plans and permitting conditions. Uh, you know, the, it's using the overlay, so the variance essentially is um. It, you know, it's moot. Uh, they do have one on the property. The overlay replaces it. They meet all the eventual standards and conditions for the overlay, so they are at seventy feet. Uh, they, you know, I, I worked, I asked Tom about that, so that's been confirmed. They need all the setbacks. Uh, they're well under the lot and building coverages. Uh, you know, at the site visit, we had one for new members. We've asked a few questions that were there. Um, in terms of zoning bylaw waivers, they were already granted as part of the previous permit, so there's no, you know, waivers asked today. So those are still applicable related to parking requirements and then the size of the sign, so that sitting wall. Uh, could be potentially considered a sign, the whole thing, because it has raised lettering on it, but those waivers were already granted. Um, you know, changes to the exist, to the previous conditions as Tom mentioned, so. You know, new dates for the plans, number of units, bedroom sizes, building height, uh, so that can be something that can. That are building architecture.
You have been dropping out a little bit, Nate.
All right, yeah, so you know, it's funny, I, I've had connectivity issue. I've lost twice, so I don't know, Doug, if you want to walk through it. Um. If I'm frozen now, I don't know.
No, you're good. We can hear you. It, it was only a couple of seconds.
All right. Uh, so the building architecture, it hasn't changed much. They've added a sixth floor. You know, there's variation in the facade treatment, setbacks and. Um, you know, and, and punchouts and there's the canopy between the first and second floor. Uh, the overlay does require, you know, some sufficient variation in facade. They, uh, it asked for a step back on the top floor. Uh, I think we've determined what the screening material will be. And so, um, you know, one question here was what would the outer, you know, the railings or system be on the? And so, um, you know, one question here was what would the outer, you know, the railings or system be on the deck space? So what, what does that look like, uh, on the top floor? So I don't know if there's any, you know, if, if the board has any questions about that or the step back on the top floor. But those are some questions asked in the report.
Yeah, is everyone comfortable with what they've proposed? Okay, I'm seeing heads shake yes and no hands to raise objections.
So the unit mix and type, there is a, you know, five studios, which is new. Eight one bedrooms, thirty one two bedrooms, seventeen three bedrooms and forty one four bedroom units for a total of 290 beds. So there is a, you know, a, a mix of unit sizes. I don't, I don't have any questions related to that unless there's some by the board.
I don't see any hands.
Right, inclusionary zoning, as Tom mentioned, we, we gained two affordable units, two more than what was approved previously. Uh, so two studios at 80% AMI for one bedroom units. Uh, this is the, you know, uh, what would be recommended, three two bedroom units. And of that, one would be at 60% AMI, so deeper affordability and two at 80% AMI. And then three three bedroom units, one at 60% and two at 80%.
So if I can interrupt.
Bruce has his hand up.
Uh, so Nate, this would be essentially, uh, one of the conditions.
Right.
As I'm listening, I'm, I guess the motion is going to be, uh, the move to modify the previously approved SPR as follows. And, uh, or with the, uh, it's probably would be as follows, right? And then there would be a list of things which we might ordinarily call conditions, but would actually be stipulations.
Right, or it'd be a modification of the, of the permit. So you know, this, I think this is, or this is condition, say 56 or 59, the previous permit. So it'd be, you know, modifying this condition number with these new, 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 um, unit counts.
Okay. Got it.
All right, moving down to number five, there are no special permits, um, for the, you know, in the overlay. Uh, there's no demolition issues. The landscape plan hasn't changed. I think they presented something that was, you know, worked on with the conservation commission and the, and then approved by the board previously. There were, you know, the overlay does require some open space. And if the board has any questions about that, uh, you know, there's the multi-use path, there are plazas on the front and back of the building. So I don't know if there's any questions about the landscape.
Does anyone have any concern with that? I know we had a fair amount of discussion about open space when we were working on the overlay. All right. Bruce?
Uh, there's also the green space that runs down into the, uh, into the wetland area, which is not going to be built upon. Uh, we're not going to park on it, but it, it is open space and it is usable. I, I understand it's going to be mode, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, and I think that the site, and I gave Nate the details and I forget them off the top of my head. I think it's like a 5.2 acre site and we're, there's like 3.1 acres which are untouched. So it's, it's essentially two acres of the whole site that are actually being developed. So there's a significant amount of open space. Um, some of it is usable, some of it is not.
I'm happy with that.
All right.
It was like, um,
We lost Nate.
Improvements and furnishings, there wasn't a condition, any details were brought back to the board. You know, that hasn't changed.
Right.
You know, I just, you know, I think we discussed the bike storage, so that was something in the report. Um, and just, you know, confirming that the site plan hadn't changed and the applicant has said that tonight already, so. Uh, no changes to the lighting plan. I guess one question was that, you know, how, would the upper decks be illuminated? And is, you know, is there something to consider there? Uh, you know, whether it's, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's required by building code, but you know, are there, will there be wall sconces or under railing lighting? Or is that something the board wants to consider, just knowing that they're, you know, higher units? And, you know, do we want to have something about any lighting up there?
Tom, would you expect there to be any lighting that illuminates the building?
I mean, in my mind's eye, I'd love to see uplighting for the whole building, but I don't think that's in the cards, so. I don't know, I think, I mean, I'm no designer, but I think maybe some wall sconces or something up on the, uh, those balconies, you know, some sort of external light so that there's some light out there. I don't think it's something that we would look to, um, you know, have it shine anywhere but on those decks that are out.
Well, I think at the, at the corner there at the roundabout, that and that facade is probably something you might want to, want to light. I, maybe Nate, maybe is, is this getting at whether the, when, on the sixth floor units, when they have an outdoor deck? Is there a light, say, over the door that goes out onto the deck?
Right, and how much light were they anticipating that those, you know, how much would that be illuminated?
Yeah, so you can use the deck at night and not be stumbling around in the dark.
Right.
I think that would be the extent of it.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, I think we discussed this last time when the deck was at the fifth floor rather than the sixth floor. But, uh, but, but maybe it was just my assumption that the, uh, building code requires an exterior light when you have an exterior door. So that, uh, I would think that our normal condition that has downcast lighting would have applied. But, uh, I assume that a minimal amount of lighting would be, uh, provided and it would be provided.
That could apply.
By code.
Yeah.
As required by the code.
Okay. All right, Nate?
Sure, uh, yeah, sign plan, there's really no changes. I think this was a, just a, the issues to consider was something that was there previously. And it, you know, there's a condition to that effect, so I don't have anything there. Site management plan. You know, uh, there is a narrative that can be, you know, incorporated into it. Uh, I think, you know, if the, to consider, two issues were, you know, ask about, uh, kind of parking use if you wanted to and parking demand. Uh, and then the hours and availability of the onsite manager, if that has changed or would change with the change in plans and number of units.
Tom, any comment on that?
Uh, as far as the onsite manager, hasn't changed, still part of the plan. I mean, somebody will be responsive to this building. It'll be a live-in onsite manager and somebody will be responsive to the building if that onsite manager is at the doctor's office or something. So we've got that covered. Um, and then just as far as parking goes, I guess we would just ask for flexibility and discretion to, uh, respond to tenants, whether they be commercial or residential. So instead of putting a minimum, and Nate had mentioned maybe a minimum for a commercial, kind of let us try to make the site work the way we envision it working. And so I think with that just comes some flexibility.
Understood.
Uh, sure, so parking and circulation, it, you know, recaps the number of spaces. Kind of the issues to consider would be how, you know, how are the spaces assigned or numbered for the tenants? And then I, you know, I just wasn't sure about confirming the number of compact spaces, but I heard it was 24. So that it had been 24, I just want to make sure that's, hadn't changed. Uh, so I think, you know, some of it would be, Tom, you mentioned that the spaces would be assigned and I don't, you know, I don't know if then the, if there's actually a physical numbering system that's painted on the ground or if there's some kind of signs that are installed, but.
Painted on the ground, physical, um, physical number system painted on the ground so that there's a, a badge and a number. Because with 160 parking spaces, you need to keep track of who's not supposed, especially proximity to the university. You have to keep track of who's there, who's supposed to be there and who's there but in the wrong space. So that's the way we'll handle it.
Do you, do you expect to have the spaces, uh, for, for the, for the residents? Um, included in the lease or would they be a separate, uh, charge?
I think right now the idea is to include them in the lease.
Okay, so you'll, so you'll figure that out at least to begin with upfront.
You've got it, exactly. And then it's, well, we don't need a space, can we get a break on rent? You know, that's, tenants look at it a different way. Where some landlords will say, okay, here's your base rent, pay additional for parking. Tenants may say, well, I'm already paying for parking as part of this, what if I don't have parking? Can I get a break? So I think, you know, I'll step back and talk about, maybe overall, I think Barry's looking to take the building down in, in August. He's pushed it a little bit, uh, he's finishing up the Amherst College site. And so I think Pleasantry's comes down in August. Uh, the delivery of this is probably August of 2027. You know, we had at the, with the last one thought we could do it in a year. Uh, not with these, this many units and this sort of construction. It's become clear that we're really looking at probably, hopefully, a temporary certificate of occupancy for kind of the majority of the building. And I'm just going to share my screen, uh, quickly if I could, Nate, can I just steal it from you? So it's probably, so the incharter building and I, uh, have an aerial, but I'll just talk through here, the incharter building, if this part of the building was not here, 2535 University Drive would be there. Uh, we are designing this building structurally, uh, from the steel on up in a way where we can end the building about here, maybe a little further, maybe it's here. So as to not impact in charter, because in charter is going to be one of the occupants. And what, one of the things we did was with the existing building, we went to them and said, hey, do you want to come over? In charter is taking us up on that offer. So we are leaving them there until Barry, maybe it's March or April, maybe, maybe a little bit further. And then they'll fill this space right here, once they're, so we'll, we'll finish to, I think, here. Hopefully get a temp, temporary certificate of occupancy, have in charter move in over a few days. And then take their building down and then, uh, build the rest of this building. So it's, you know, let's say 95% and then the last 5%, if not 97 and, and three. Um, but that's the plan at this point.
Okay. Bruce?
Oh dear, uh, I forgot what I was going to ask. Sorry, I was, I was wrapped up, I'll think of it again.
Okay. Nate?
Uh, traffic impact, uh, hasn't changed, you know, Tom confirmed number of parking spaces. And that really drives kind of the demand. No change to stormwater, uh, you know, there is an order of conditions on this property from the conservation commission that would guide that and the erosion control plan. Uh, nothing with the utilities. Uh, you know, I think they've done a, you know, they're, they're on the roof or they're screened at the corner, as Tom mentioned, near, on Amity Street. I'll work within the right of way. You know, there is a roundabout proposed for this intersection, it's been shifted a little bit to reduce the impact to this property. The town's, uh, working on that with UMass, we have a MassWorks grant. And then as the plans show, the idea is to have a bus pull off south of the curb cut to this property. Uh, that was on the previous plans, that hasn't changed, it was modified near the end of the hearing. Uh, but it was approved as part of the previous site plan and that hasn't changed either. As Angus mentioned, I said at the site visit, uh, there's been discussions about, well, if there's a bus stop there, would we need a crosswalk at some point? You know, that's kind of the extent of that conversation, but it's something that is, you know, has been mentioned. Um, depending on, you know, how it gets used and what happens after it's all built. Uh, the construction logistics plan, it had been submitted. I think, you know, we might want to just talk about how, as Tom mentioned, what the, um, you know, phasing.
Nope, we lost Nate.
Is really like, uh, in terms of, you know, how that works with a charter in the building. Uh, the, there was an AR plan that the, uh, has been recorded, so the lots have been combined, that was a condition. Uh, and then there's a private agreement between properties, this is a carryover from the previous permit, I just wanted to highlight it. About, you know, sharing parking at Ford University Drive. And there was a condition, uh, in the, in the, in the site, in the 2024 site plan to ask for an updated agreement or if that's necessary at all. And so that could be something that's discussed here.
Tom?
Yeah, that's, it's, uh, unfortunately, uh, Amherst Public House is not so busy where it's necessary. I don't know that they've ever revealed themselves of it, so it's just a matter of, I, I think, um, as Nate notes in the condition, we have to go in front of the ZBA at a public meeting. And so we're just talking to the restaurant operators, Barry owns the land. So we're just talking to the restaurant operators about who's actually going through that process. So I suspect that'll be done in the next six months, if that.
Does that agreement have an expiration date or it's perpetual?
Yeah, I think it was bad, either bad or good lawyering, depends how you look at it. Uh, I don't think it has an expiration date.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think it does either. You know, the fire department has reviewed this and, you know, there'll be a part of the conversations as it goes through construction logistics and town engineer didn't have many other, any comments, new comments in conservation commission. There's no changes, so their approval isn't changed. You know, the addition of the floor doesn't change anything that could, or was already approved by them.
So Nate, on the construction logistics, I guess I'm not clear on, you know, uh, unless, unless the construction logistic had some sort of external effect and, you know, it was a nuisance for Butters or something like that. Other than that, I don't know why, do we care what, about the logistics and the, the phasing?
Well, I think it's important just knowing like how, you know, how the site will be fenced, you know, how the entire building is accessed. And then, you know, if for, uh, the building department inspection services, how do they issue permit? So there's going to be one occupancy permit, may, you know, that's in operation for a building that's not our issued for the new building. I, I think it's just managing that, um, and just having an understanding of what's happening.
Is that something that this board needs to be aware of? Or is it really between Rob and the builder?
Uh, I mean, I think it's good for the board to be aware of it. And if you'd want to have it as a condition, I, I was going to just look at what the previous permit said in terms of phasing or the construction logistics, but.
Okay.
You know, just to make sure that, say, there's no inconsistent land uses or permits happening. You know, the overlay does allow, you know, um, you know, different building types and uses occurring on the same property. So it was just to make sure that, you know, all that is still consistent.
Okay. Angus?
Just have a question about Tom's response to, uh, one of Nate's questions about the, um, facade and the setback. Um, so, uh, Tom, you wrote that, uh, so Nate asked, the sixth floor needs to be stepped back from the street but for facing facade, please describe how the standard is met. And you wrote, we have stepped the top floor back four feet from the main facade line and elected to step back portions of the facade below to align with the upper step back in order to enhance the modulation of the facade and reduce the apparent massing of the building. Um, looking at the design, uh, uh, the, the presentation set, I don't, the, the building looks perfectly vertical. So I guess I'm wondering what, what you mean by, I understand the setback for the sixth floor, but what you mean by the kind of modulation of the setbacks moving up?
Uh, I sound like an architect, don't I? So if you, if you look here, you know, you've got the canopy which extrudes a little bit beyond, you know, this piece, this piece, this piece here, this piece here, this piece here, this piece here. Um, and so the, the step backs, you know, occur in this area, in this area, in this area and in this area. And so then if you, if you look, that's the same step back that you're actually getting on that sixth story flush kind of all the way down. So you get the modulations here where you've got the, you know, the building is actually, you know, 24 feet from the property line. And then you get another four feet back where you get, you know, the bulks of the building, you know, looked at inversely. You got a 28 foot building with some bump outs, if you want to look at it in a different way. But that's what I tried to say.
Gotcha, thank you for the clarification.
All right. I will ask the, the attendees that, from the public, are there any comments on this project from, from you all? Please raise your hands, I see one already. Uh, Pam, let's bring over Hilda Greenbaum and Hilda, you can remind us of your street address and you have three minutes.
I live at 298 Montague Road in North Amherst. And my question is a broader planning question. I take University Drive rather often and it's one of the worst streets, especially coming off the UMass portion, which is in evacuable condition and has the modern multipath along the sides, et cetera, as this building. So my broader question is, what are the plans from the University Drive? And, and will that be, um, resurfaced? And, and will that be resurfaced along with the rotary at the corner? And then what about that? I have heard somewhere that, that you, the multi-purpose path on the west side of University Drive, just let's see, south of this building was going to be eliminated. So I'm asking what the impact of the, the new construction, both, both the roadway and the, and the rotary et cetera around this building, what will be the, the result? And how, how will the post office and the CVS? Let's see, the drug, drug window, what do you call it? The pharmacy access but drive through there, how's that going to be affected in, in the shorter run?
Okay, thank you, Hilda.
Seems like the package is going on there and I haven't heard anything about what the plans, you know, are for the rest of that street. But you can't drive one without driving half in the wrong lane to get around the puddles.
Yeah, the, the, the hope would be to.
Whoops, Nate, you dropped out.
Resurface University Drive finished, so. My.
Why don't you start that sentence again, Nate? You dropped out.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So the plan would be to resurface University Drive after the roundabout is completed. So that was part of our grand application. You know, there are material costs, but that's still something we're looking at doing. The access road on the west side, you know, as the overlay, if it gets built out, the hope would be that that gets converted to the multi-use path. So nothing's changing south of this project site. So access to, you know, the bike exchange, the pizza shop, post office, none of that's changing at this point. It would only change if there's a project proposed. And then, you know, town staff would work with the applicant to see what would happen. But, you know, we're always envisioning access to those, to those sites if needed. And so, you know, there is, there is a provision that you may need to petition town council, property owners to get a curb cut. We don't see that as a big barrier. That was envisioned at a time when they thought University Drive was going to be kind of a limited access highway and almost like a main entrance right up to UMass back in the 60s, but that's not really the case. So we don't see in the future if there needs to be a different curb cut to support a different project in elimination of a curb cut and changing that western access road to be, you know, a deal breaker or something we would want to work with to achieve kind of the visions of the overlay and having two multi-use paths on both sides of the road.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Hilda. Any other members of the public want to ask a question, make a comment? All right. I don't see any hands. So the time is 8:07 and we usually take a break of about five minutes around this time. It seems like a good time to do that, so please mute and turn off your camera and turn them back on when you return. We'll come back around 12 minutes after eight. Thank you. Pam, I think we're done with the timer for the moment.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. So Nate, you said you had drafted some findings and conditions.
Yeah, I can share my screen. That's.
All right. Well, let's give Fred one more minute and then move on. I, I, I think while we're waiting, Jonathan, I'd like to ask you a question. Kind of looking at the elevations, I feel like six stories is about as far as I would want to take that party. You know, seven would be too, too much. You'd need.
I, I would agree.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with six?
I'm sure I'm comfortable with six. So this project has had a little bit of, you know, time for us. We've worked on it for a while now. And we have looked at six-story versions in the past when the first overlay kind of narrative for iteration of, of a possible overlay came out. And so was looking at both, at both sort of sizes and I felt comfortable at that point. We agree with you. Like, when you get to seven stories, you're, you're, you're not just sort of a higher vision. It's, it becomes a different aesthetic. You're the, the design kind of change.
Yeah. All right. Fred has joined us. We're all back. And Nate, why don't we go into the findings and conditions you've drafted? I, I didn't see any more hands of, from the public, so I'll assume we can move on.
Am I sharing? What am I sharing? Maybe that I have a few documents up on, maybe I'm sharing the wrong one.
Now, now you have.
The Munson. All right, let me, uh. Let me do a new share.
Well, we were seeing two Word documents, but the one on top was for Munson.
There you go. This is correct.
All right. So there's a draft binding. It's, it's a longer one.
Yeah.
And draft conditions. Would you like me to read and we can go through that?
Well, I guess we, we often do that. How many pages of this are, is there?
It's really, uh, I guess it's, you know, these are new conditions I was proposing, some of based on tonight's conversation, so it's a little over a page. You know, the conditions are really just taking what Tom had said. So changing, you know, six conditions of the original permit. They don't, it doesn't add much to it.
Yeah, okay. So under.
And then just the finding.
I guess the key finding is that the board finds that the project meets the requirements of Article 17, University Drive Overlay District. Because the project complies with the dimensional standards, provides non-residential space in excess of the minimum amount and has satisfied the open space standards, parking justification and design guidelines. So board members, as we go through this, if you have objections to what is written or, or comments or suggestions for changes, please raise your hand. So Nate, that, that's, that finding seems adequate to me.
All right. All right. And then we'll go down to the draft conditions. So, you know, to amend the, the conditions from the SPR 2024-11. So condition one, you know, essentially it remains the same except for the dates, right? So, you know, development shall be sub, built substantially in accordance with the plan submitted to the planning board and approved on, I have March 19th, 2025, and then revised and approved by the planning board on July 16th, 2025.
So these kinds of things, I mean, the, should we be saying that these new conditions supersede those found in the original? You know, they're not in addition, they're. Is it obvious to everybody else or is it, what is it worth saying that these new conditions replace the? You know, the following conditions shall be amended, shall be.
It says amended, so I think that's sufficient for me.
Sufficient? Okay, all right. Go ahead.
All right. Condition two, same thing, just the development shall be managed and substantially in accordance with the management plan submitted to the board and approved on March 19th and then revised and approved by the planning board on July 16th, 2025. Condition 18, the total number of dwelling units to be constructed at the project site shall be limited to a maximum of 102 units. One studio.
I think, shouldn't it be a colon after units?
It's five studio, one bath. So I think I cut out what Doug?
Well, you know, I hate turning into a grammatic goal. Anyway, after units, it should probably be a colon.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. And then listing it's five studio, one bath, eight one-bedroom, one bath, 31 two-bedroom, one bath, 17 three-bedroom, two bath, and 41 four-bedroom, two bath.
Okay.
Condition 19, the building shall not exceed a maximum of six stories and a total of 70 feet in height measured from the average finished grade on the street side of the building to the highest point of the flat roof, excluding any parapet or other rooftop equipment as outlined in section 6.7 of the zoning by law. 6.17. So, you know, this was a condition, really what's changed in these conditions right now is just, you know, the stories and heat and the height and feet, the rest is kind of just repeated. Same with condition 56. So, you know, according to Article 15, inclusionary zoning of the zoning by law, at least 12% of the dwelling units, so 12 units, shall be and shall be and shall remain affordable in perpetuity. According to Article 15, 10 units shall be marketed to eligible households whose annual income may not exceed 80% of the area median income adjusted for household size, as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Additionally, two units shall be marketed to eligible households whose annual income may not exceed 60% AMI adjusted for household size. And these are the affordable units.
Yep, you can scroll up.
Okay, I, I thought I saw a hand raised, but.
I do not at the moment.
Condition 59, the affordable units shall include, and so it lists them two studios at 80%. This is what was taken from the development application report and the application. Four one-bedroom units at 80%, three two-bedroom units, one at 60% AMI and two at 80% AMI. And then three, three-bedroom units, one at 60% AMI and two at 80% AMI. So that means the inclusionary zone.
So why are there no four?
Impossible new conditions? There weren't originally. And there had been a discussion about that. I mean, we could, you know, some of it is that sometimes we've heard that it's hard to fill a four-bedroom unit. And then a three-bedroom unit, you know, the way it's worked is in terms of number of beds, you could still have, you know, like three to five or six occupants actually of a three-bedroom unit, depending on, you know, how many, say, adults. And then, and then dependents. So you still can have a range of household sizes in a three-bedroom unit.
All right. Bruce?
That was my memory of the discussion as well, but I raised my hand because we're about to hit the new conditions. And Nate, I, I would strongly recommend that we number these new conditions starting with a number that's next in line from the old set of conditions. And do you want me to find, or can you quickly find out what that? We don't need to do that right now, but, but these should be numbered because otherwise you, you can't refer to a bullet in a, in a, in a, in a memo.
Yeah, it would be the condition seventy two, and I can get that started.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. We'll just, I'll have them numbered for now and then we can.
Yes. You conditioned seventy two.
You know, again, this is for board discussion. These are things that, you know, are taken from the development application report or comments, the latter ones from tonight. Nothing shall restrict or reduce public access to the multi-use path that runs along the east side of the property along University Drive. You know, the overlay requires that there be a multi-use path and it's be open to the public, but a condition could just reinforce that. The multi-use path shall be maintained at a minimum width of ten feet without any obstructions such as furniture or signs.
Nate, Bruce, you still have your hand up. Okay, it was a legacy.
All right. Changes to the arc.
Where'd you go?
Good texture such as overhanging canopies.
You broke out.
My, my here again. It's funny. I think I've had bad internet today at home is what I've heard. Am I here?
Yes, you are here. You did break up. Why don't you start number three again?
Sure. Yeah. Changes to the architecture such as, but not limited to material changes, window sizes and patterns, overhanging canopies or variations in the plane shall be reviewed by the board at a public meeting to determine whether conditions of the permit are being complied with and whether any modification of the site plan review is necessary. That just kind of speaks to the design guidelines from the overlay. And I, you know, if it's, you know, we kind of have a condition to that effect anyways, but I just wanted to see if there's something specific to some of the design guidelines from the overlay, if that's the board, if the board would like that.
This is changes from the design that we have, has been submitted tonight, right?
Right. Yeah. From anything that's been approved. Right.
So they'd have to come back.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes, I think this is reasonable. I mean, the applicant is coming back and asking something within the framework of a new or extension of the bylaw, and this is what this bylaw says. So I think this is a good one because this is the first outing. I remember when we did the years and years ago, the first outing on the farm land protection overlay and it was trying to basically get stuff like this back to us so that we could get, get feedback essentially. So I think this is a good, this is a good condition. And I think Nate's worded it well. And it may be that, you know, Jonathan and Barry will simply talk to Nate and it may be de minimis. But I think from the, for the fact that we've taken so much trouble to get this bylaw and it, and it's going to head on down University Drive. I, I would like the applicant to be obligated to help us understand what we've put into law by doing this, by, by, by exceeding to this condition.
All right, Angus. Can I make a request that we maybe either add or change, change the language to changes to the architecture and design? The bylaw explicitly uses the word design, and I think adding design to this would, would make it clearer what we're asking about and what we're referring to in the bylaws.
I guess I would just have one request, and I don't know if it's a first line, we do talk to Nate or, or Rob, but you know, sometimes when we go to procure materials, they may not be the exact color of what we presented to you. And so you know, just a matter of whether it's, we go to Nate and say, hey, Nate, instead of this red brick, it's a little bit lighter of a shade of red brick. I don't know if you want to build in slight variations or if the mechanism is to go to Nate first. And then if it rises to the level, he pushes us to you. Either one's fine. I just, I'm just thinking practically here.
Yep. Well, I think we were expecting anything that this applied to things that were not considered de minimis.
Okay.
Bruce?
Yes, I agree. I think, Tom, the answer to that, your question is that the intent of this condition is to keep track of the way in which we as a board and the town, ultimately the council voted to create this overlay by law. And so we want to just make sure that our language is working. And so it's clearly brick colors and things like that are not relevant, but changes that speak to the structure of the bylaw or the wording of the bylaw and so forth, that that's where we might want to talk to you.
Perfect. Thanks.
Sure. And then, you know, four, five and six, which would be, you know, different numbers if, if approved, you know, one is, do we want to clarify any demolition phasing? And so that was just something we put in there. Doug, you had asked if that's necessary. You know, we do call.
If this was, if this were a property that was surrounded by residential abutters, you know, I, I might, I'd feel differently about it, but given where it's at and the lack of any, you know, anybody who's likely to object, I, I'm not sure I'm all that worried about it. Jesse?
Yeah, I, I agree. Given that they're, the tenants moving into the space, that obviously it's in everyone, both of their interests to make it work. So I don't think we need those details.
Yeah. And if it falls apart and charter goes elsewhere, you know, I wish them luck. And I wish you luck in finding tenants. So Nate, I'm not sure I need, I don't need that. Yeah. Jesse, is that a legacy hand?
Well, I was gonna, on the next point also, but I can wait.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I also similarly don't feel the need to have the parking use and management completely laid out because again, it's in their interest to make it work. So I'm not concerned about that.
Right. How do others feel? Bruce, I gave a thumbs up. Angus nodded. Yes.
I mean, do we want a condition that they reference available parking and lease agreements or anything like that? Or, or is that getting too detailed?
Well, Nate, one thing I, I guess comes to mind, you know, how we had what's his name from, from the project on Main Street?
Revolsky.
Yeah, after eighteen months and tell us how's it working? I think that would actually be a good idea.
I agree. The same reason as it was for number three.
Come back eighteen months after the project has opened, you know, and it's, you've got tenants and talk to us about how it's working.
Oh, yeah, I thought, did we, yeah, I was just, I'm looking at the, the previous permit. I don't think we actually put it in, did we? I don't think we actually had that. Yeah. Yeah, we do have it. So the applicant shall return to the planning board at a public meeting within one year after the final certificate of occupancy and present information about parking usage and demand, including adequacy of parking for non-residential spaces. The board may ask the applicant to come back again. So.
Okay. Tom, do you think a year is long enough? Are you likely to have all your tenants in there by then?
Eighteen months, I think, would be better just in case, you know, as I'm thinking about it, do things, one, if we lease up in August and then that last section in December, final CO in December, it gives us like a flush through the system. So we'll be able to see, okay, what worked, what didn't work, what have we changed? And we can kind of give you a, we've had one year under our belt. Here's, here's how it's worked. Here's how it hasn't worked. And here's what we're doing different. Here's what you should suggest others do. And, you know, kind of frankly, we're always talking with the town anyways, you know, we're talking to Nate or Rob. And so, you know, if there are ever questions, ask, like, that's, that's who we are. So, but yeah, eighteen months, I think would be better. So if we want to amend whatever condition that was Nate and just change it to be, you know, whatever the existing condition was, change it to be eighteen months instead of a year, I think that'd be terrific.
Yes, condition sixteen, and so we can just change to eighteen months.
Great.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
All right. And then there was, you know, a comment about bike storage. And so I don't, you know, I didn't, other than just having additional bike storage, do we need to have any, any condition about that, you know, additional exterior bike storage?
Jonathan counted, we've got fifteen bike loops outside. Is that enough? Is that not enough? I mean, Jesse, you tell us, we're happy to put extra. We're trying to find that balance, obviously.
I couldn't tell you what the right number is. The picture just looked like it was four. That seemed too little. I do appreciate Doug's comment about some in the front though, about people visiting. So, you know.
We can do that for sure.
Yeah. So maybe, I mean, do you have any in the front now?
Yes, there's, I can show you enough. I have enough on, and the others ruin the rim. We can easily add more.
Sure. Great.
Well, maybe when you come back in eighteen months, you can talk to us about bike, bike use too.
Yeah, that sounds like a great plan.
Yeah. There's some right here in the front. You get it. All right here, if you see it.
Oh, good.
I got it. Yeah, I didn't pick up on that.
Tom, for the record, I had forgotten that we had split them. Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Good. All right. So.
So any condition there or? Probably.
I think we're gonna let that slide and we maybe try to remember to talk about bikes in eighteen months also. I mean, if you want to put that in that amendment just to help remind us.
Condition sixteen. Yeah, if you want to add.
Yeah, talk about parking and bike storage or something.
Yeah. Parking usage and demand adequacy, parking and bike, bike storage, bike usage and storage. It's good.
All right. So sounds like we have findings. We have conditions. We're gonna want to close the hearing. We're gonna need some motions, and I know Bruce is probably all ready to go. Bruce?
I am. But Jesse, why didn't you move?
Oh.
I could share my screen again if that's.
Okay, no, I'll do it. Well, I was gonna say move to modify the previously approved SPR with the, with the, the findings and amended and additional conditions as presented and discussed.
And close the hearing.
And close the public hearing. Thank you, Doug. I always need help with that.
Nate and Pam, did we cover everything?
I think so.
I believe that you did. Yes.
Okay. All right. And it sounds like you've got enough documentation to put it in the minutes and the other papers that will be filed. So, okay. Jesse?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead and vote. I guess I'll give the public one more chance. I'm not gonna wait too long, but anything anybody wants to say from the public? Other than thank you for staying with us. Okay. We'll go ahead through the vote and why don't we start this time with Jesse?
I approve.
Johanna?
Aye.
Jira? I'm sorry, say that again?
Aye.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Angus?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. That's seven in favor. We are unanimous.
Thank you very much, as always.
Thank you. Okay, time is eight thirty eight. Moving on with our agenda. Next item is the general housing discussion, continued discussion regarding a potential overlay for existing apartment complexes. Nate, do you want to introduce this? Or I think it seems like we may want to give a little bit of an explanation for Angus and Jira.
Sure. Yeah, I don't have much to share. The housing subcommittee is meeting next week and this would be discussed. So for the members of the public and new planning board members, you know, after the University Drive overlay, before that was decided, there was discussions about where else in town could there be, you know, infill or new development. North Amherst is something the board is looking at. North of UMass up to Meadow Street. So there's an area where there's already multi-unit development and looking at having an overlay district there to allow, you know, a pretty big densification of units. This was recommended in the two thousand fifty, there was existing density and, you know, can you increase it? So really it's trying to provide an opportunity for, for, you know, redevelopment of those existing areas. We've been looking at, you know, what's the right number in terms of height, units, kind of site design and how, kind of how prescriptive would the overlay be? So we've kind of modeled it after the U-Drive overlay and we started to work on kind of a template of language and kind of, you know, we're trying to get some maps going and figure out how that would actually look on the ground.
Yeah, Nate, do you think you could maybe send or Pam, you could send some of the materials that were provided at one of the previous meetings to Angus and Jira, just to give them, kind of bring them up to speed? This is, this, we were mostly talking about the area with the, with like Puffton Village and Presidential and Brandywine. And I think that was the majority of the developments, all on the west side of North Pleasant Street. From essentially from Presidential North to Meadow Street. So, and then we had talked about allowing more density and higher buildings as you go from North Pleasant Street toward the west, toward one sixteen. The grade drops off a little bit as you go west, so we thought we could increase the height of the buildings without too much visual impact if we did that. But yeah, if you guys could send some of the materials over to them. Or just maybe just an email saying which packet it was in. That way we don't have to kill any trees along the way. Bruce and then Jesse and then Angus.
You said most of what I was gonna say, Doug. I was just gonna, Jerron Angus's point of view, just give a, a couple of high-level observations and I'll add a couple more to what you said. We've discussed, and when I say we've discussed, this is, I'm speaking both of the housing subcommittee and of the board, but most of the discussions on this matter so far has been done at housing subcommittee discussions and the four involved are myself, Fred, led by Jesse. Karen was a member of that group. She will probably continue to attend, but not as a, a member of the planning board. The, I think that we see this more specifically as an opportunity to create housing for students more so than, than perhaps the University Drive, although you can tell from the amount of four-bedroom units that Barry's got in that property that we might expect there might be more, there might be quite a few students living there, but again, it's close to the university. So it's not something that we would be antithetical to. But the, the, the notion that's driving me particularly on this project, and I say this as the sole member of the board, actually, from North Amherst, and probably will be the, the member of the board that gets pilloried most immediately by my neighbors if things aren't exactly the way folks want it, which of course they never are. But still, you know, folks will have clear interests, but the, it seems that the opportunity to create an inordinate amount of housing opportunity for students in this, these locations is something that we have been discussing and considering with a view perhaps to taking some of the load off the downtown area, which typically now is taking a lot of student loads and they're doing it in housing that we would like to see stay. the downtown area, which typically now is taking a lot of student loads, and they're doing it in housing that we would like to see stay as housing for uh, um, full-time residents, people that don't come and go like that, and therefore inevitably destabilize residential neighborliness. So that's number one. Number two is, uh, these are a few very large lots, and most of them are in a single ownership, so it's an unusual opportunity for, uh, us to solve our, a good slash of our housing problem uh, in this area. It's close to the university, the single, big, big parcels. Um, mostly not all sing, uh, single owner. And, um, and they are uh, kind of nestled and bracketed by, um, one sixteen, so there's, there's not, there's much of an impact on the local neighborhood as it might be if they were on the other side of the road. So those are the basic considerations, and I think what's going to frustrate the neighborhood most will be the anticipated, uh, traffic impact of this. Um, oh, one more thing. Uh, we've been advised that, uh, we, that, that a threefold increase in density is a kind of a threshold um, that is what you, what one should expect would be enough to shift an owner who's got a quite nicely functioning housing business where tenants and everything is, in order to shake the, the, that enough to get them to tear it all down and build something else. You can't just offer them, uh, a small amount of increased density, a threefold density is is what we consider, and, 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 and that can be done. And at the scale we're talking about, that would generate, uh, a, a really significant number of, of, uh, affordable housing units, potentially another hundred or a hundred and fifty, I think, something like that. Anyway, a lot of additional affordable housing. And so then we've been discussing, well, the bylaw currently asks for the affordable housing to be suffused within the, uh, the development. I mean, that's more or less what Barry Roberts is being asked to do with his building. Uh, we don't think, I should say, I don't think, and I think my opinion is shared by others, that when you've got such a large slice of affordable housing that's been created, it's, it's a kind of a village-scale thing, and so we, we think we want to think differently about how the, uh, the, uh, the, the, um, inclusionary, uh, housing is dealt with within this, and, and we think that the wording of the overlay should address that. So those are a couple more um, things that have taken quite a lot of time in discussion.
Alright.
And done, thank you.
Jesse.
Thanks, uh, not a lot to add to what Bruce said. I was gonna bring up a slightly different point for the board to consider. Um, which is, over the past month, I've just happened since met a couple of people who live abutting or are very close to this area we're talking about, and I know it's come up a few times, how we can solicit public opinion or have a hearing or different things. I don't think we're quite there ready yet with our details, but I encourage us to try and get there soon enough, sooner than later, to have some kind of public format for discussion, because there's clearly.
Are, are you finding that people don't feel they can come to our meetings and make comments?
No, but, uh, I think it's the right way to proceed. I, I mean, I think it's the again, I don't know what all the mechanisms that the board and the town has to contact butters and neighborhoods to say, we're considering this kind of thing, we want your feedback. I would just like us to do that.
So more of a publicity?
Yeah, yeah, like, here, here's roughly what we're thinking, tell us your concerns, tell us you're in favor, whatever. I mean, again, I can imagine different formats to do that. I don't know what we're allowed to do, I don't know what has been done in the past that's worked.
Right. Nate, um, you know, are there different strategies that, that have been used in the past beyond what we're currently doing?
Yeah, I mean, with the University Drive, we, you know, typically for zoning changes, you don't, we don't mail every butter. I mean, it could be townwide, right, if it affects that, so it's not a requirement. I think in this area, it could be publicity, it could be, you know, we call it, whether we call it a public meeting or a public forum, uh, we could try to do an online comment form as well, so I think there's a few things we could do. Um, you know, we're, we are getting to the point where we have some, um, you know, language on paper, we might have some maps and some things, and so I, I could see by September, we'd be ready, you know, uh, to have, you know, have the public comment on it. I think we'd have some more concrete information that they could respond to, so we'd be able to frame the overlay and have some ideas of what it, you know, what building heights or kind of areas of, you know, concentration could look like for buildings, and so, yeah, I think that is something we could do. It is, it is, you know, and maybe we try to have it in North Amherst at someplace outside of Town Hall or some other location. It's always tricky, but, um, figure something out.
Yeah, would we actually have a board meeting up at the, the library up there? I'm not even sure that's big enough, you know, we might get if, if we got a hundred people, it'd be too small. So.
But just, yeah, so, part, part of what got me thinking more about it was was one conversation was with a butter, or potential butter, another was someone who lived across the street in the latter neighborhood, you know, who wouldn't be in a butter, who wouldn't get that kind of notification, and so I, I agree with what Bruce said, the main concern is about traffic patterns, most likely, and that doesn't affect just the butters, and that's why I think it'd be wise for us to have the larger conversation, if possible.
Okay, great. Angus?
Yeah, I was just gonna say for Pam, I, I, I looked back over the, uh, I think it was the June eighteenth meeting, was when y'all talked about this, and Bruce, uh, presented some documents maybe, or at least there were documents that Bruce, Bruce had prepared around the Puffton Village Apartments that were really helpful. I don't know if there are additional discussions around this from previous meetings, but I know that was at least one set, and it was really helpful to get a sense of what y'all are thinking of with this additional, um, overlay district.
Uh, Jesse, I see your hand.
Hey, thanks, um, yeah, Angus, actually, all the subcommittee meetings are also recorded. They're not, Nate, are they yet through the town website?
Yeah, they're, the.
On YouTube?
They are online through the town's, uh, YouTube channel, I think, I don't know if I've linked them from the subcommittee webpage, but they are there as a separate, uh, you know, set of recordings.
And the, the other thing, I can probably figure out which meetings were most relevant and let you know. Um, and of course, I was gonna mention this later, but I'd definitely encourage you both to come join the subcommittee if you're interested. Details later in that report.
Alright, Bruce?
Um, up at this end of town, there's the District One Neighborhood Association. And, uh, and, uh, a, a month or two ago, uh, Kathy Shane asked me, uh, because she was, she and Larry were here having dinner, whether, uh, I, which really kind of means us or someone would come to her six, she, she reports, uh, she and, and the other District, uh, One councillor have, uh, meetings once, twice a year. And there'll be one in September or sometime shortly, and she was asking me whether we could, uh, make some uh, presentation about what's being thought about. So the, uh, the opportunity is to one opportunity is to do it through the District One Neighborhood Association, and that would be in the library. Um, and you're right, it might not be big enough, but, uh, overflow crowds are great. Uh, that's when you know you need to do something more, or actually when you've been successful. I mean, we've always tried to get overflow clouds and we never do, so I would put it in the library and, 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 uh, see if we can't get more people than we can fit in the room.
Alright. Jesse?
Yeah, it's a great idea, Bruce, if, if the board is up for that, some fraction of us. I will say, I've done that twice over the past year for different groups, for different reasons. Not, not really as a board representative, and didn't quite come to tar and pitchforks, but it was you know, it, it might not be a successful encounter, but yes, I think it's worth doing, for sure.
But you're saying we need to pick a room with a second exit behind?
Yes, exactly.
Uh, Jira?
Um, I think that meeting with, uh, and presenting to the Neighborhood Association is a great idea. I would, though, encourage us to reach out to other people, um, because those, the members who are, uh, probably active in the Neighborhood Association may not be representative of the people who would probably be living in those apartments. Um, and so I think, you know, we wouldn't want to say, we wouldn't want to just ask the Neighborhood Association what their opinions are on the overlay district, we'd want to get the input of a variety of other residents, um, current and future as well.
Alright. Alright, so maybe we'll just say there's more to come on that conversation. Um. Jesse, it sounded like the Housing Subcommittee does plan to meet before our next planning board meeting?
Correct, um, right now we're scheduled for Wednesday twenty-third at eleven-thirty AM, eleven-thirty to one PM. Um, I know that's midday, the current committee is able to do that. Uh, certainly if there's interest from others to join, we can rearrange schedules and have it in the evenings.
Okay. Alright, uh, time is eight fifty-five, uh, next item on our agenda is old business, uh, topics not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance. Pam, Nate, do we have any such topics?
I don't.
No, I don't either.
Alright. Um, new business, um, PVPC. Our annual assessment with the PVPC.
Yeah.
Nate, there was something in our packet.
Yeah, we looked previously when this was brought to the board, I think it was just an acknowledgement that, you know, uh, we're part of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission uh, jurisdiction, so they're the regional planning agency, and they they assess towns based on, uh, population. And so they, you know, we just, it was actually to the assessor, um, showing what Amherst would, you know, and, and other, I don't know if it included all the towns, but kind of what the fee structure is.
So I had one question about that. And, uh, it's that oh, actually, never mind, I see that, I, I, for a minute I thought ours was the highest, but Springfield is higher than us and Westfield, so.
And Jacoby, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Well, we're getting up there, we're one of the larger towns in the area.
Yeah.
Okay. So I assume this appropriation or this, this, these dues are, come out of the town budget? And, um, that that's not a problem for this year's budget?
Right, it, it's actually, I think, through the assessor's office, and so there's really, I, I think it's, there's nothing for us to do with it.
Okay. Bruce?
Uh, we might, uh, be mindful, I don't know whether it is, is, but that thirty-nine thousand is, uh, it takes the full load of the UMass student body. Um, if, if we look at the number of people who actually live in town, we're about twelve or thirteen thousand. So, uh, uh, we're paying for, uh, a lot of folks who live at the university or, or come here, uh, who don't spend all of their year here. I think it's nothing we can do much about, I don't suppose, but it's, it's, um, it's something that we should bear in mind.
Alright. Okay, any other new business topics not anticipated?
Nope.
Nothing from Pam, nothing from Nate?
No.
Alright, um, Form A and our subdivision applications? Anything?
No.
No.
Any upcoming ZVA applications we might wanna get a preview of?
Not at this time.
Alright, upcoming SVP, SPR, SUB applications?
Uh, not yet.
Is it gonna be a quiet summer?
No.
There's, you know, we, we've been talking to, to different property owners and folks, and they, you know, they'll probably come, they're just, they're so preliminary, it's not worth mentioning, you know, it could be a month or more before they even submit an application, so.
Okay, alright. Alright, um, time, just for the record, is eight fifty-eight. Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports, Bruce, anything for PVPC? Nothing. Jesse, anything more for Housing Subcommittee?
Uh, yeah, a couple of quick things, uh, mostly for Jira and Angus, and then some procedural questions. Um, so we started this subcommittee, or I think I was encouraged to start this subcommittee about a year ago. Uh, came out of a sense of, a little sense of urgency to try and make some movement for the housing stock in Amherst, largely with this main motivation to help relieve the pressure on the neighborhoods from the students looking for housing nearby the university. Um, so we've mostly focused on trying to get things the board is largely in favor of in closer to ready shape to move on to Town Council or wherever things need to go next. I think we've been somewhat successful at that. Um, so that's the, that's the purpose and the goal and how we've been operating. Um, it was four of us, including Karen, who's no longer on the board, so now there are three of us officially on the subcommittee, and this gets to my question. Uh, I guess for Nate or Doug, maybe, you know, the Planning Board approved four of us as the committee. Are we now by default a committee of three, and is that okay? Do we need to officially make that official? Um, I'm fine, I think it's actually better if we leave it as three, because we've had issues getting quorum to meet with four. So with three, we're only a quorum of two, so that should be easier for scheduling. Um, the other comment for everyone else who would like to join is, of course you should join, and we operate as more of a discussion than a formal committee. Um, unless one of you is really dying to be an official member, I'm fine with that, too. We'll just have to work on schedules and try and do that a little more officially, maybe than we have done in the past. Um, so maybe one of you can answer my question first. Are we okay to operate as a committee of three by default, since Count Karen is not here?
Yeah, I think all three members would have to be in attendance, really, it's still then a quorum out of four, just because that was the vote, we could always amend it, but I think that, I think that's easy.
And Nate, um, at some point in the next I don't know, six weeks, let's say, we're gonna vote on new, on new officers. And, um, at that time, we can vote, you know, the new members for this iteration of the board, uh, who are on the committee.
Yeah, as part of the staff report at the end of the agenda, I was gonna recommend right, either in August or early September, voting, you know, officers, so that's Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk. Uh, you know, there's Board and Committee reps and subcommittees, so I think for the next month, I think it's fine, Jesse, and if we wanted to change in six weeks, we could.
It, sorry, it's fine, but we need all three of us to have a meeting? And if that's true, I would ask the board to vote that we're just a committee of three. In case one of us can't make it, that would mean we'd have to cancel the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I know, I know, we have too many meetings scheduled. We all, three of us said we could be there, but life is life, so.
Jesse, make the motion.
Okay, I move that the Planning Board, uh, point the subcommittee members as just three people, which is Bruce Colton, Fred Hartwell, and myself, Jesse Major.
Jira?
Well, I, I had a question, um, although I guess I second, I second Jesse's motion.
Well, okay, now we've got a second, what's your question?
My question is, um, uh, Jesse, when you were saying like, you know, joining the meetings versus being an official member, would we be joining as like a, just a, a Jira, a resident of Amherst, or would I be a panelist and just like a non-voting? Member?
You would be a non-voting member, but the way we've run the meetings is not like in the participant room and you raise your hand. We, we basically run it as a conversation. And unless the meeting gets too big, that's how we would plan to continue, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, Jira.
I'm all in favor for you to be an official member, if you'd like to be. I wasn't trying to discourage that.
No, I, well, I mean, I'm, I'm very interested, I just am cautious of overcommitting myself.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, well, well, you'll get a second chance, because we, when we do our voting later, we can revisit the question. I will say, I have not been a member, I went to one meeting uh, a couple of months ago, when we were starting to talk about the North Amherst overlay, and you know, it's really, it is, it is purely a conversation, I didn't feel like any second-class person, uh, except that I was, it was the first time I was in that conversation.
Great.
So. Alright, um, that's it for. All right, that's it for Housing Subcommittee.
Can we vote?
We didn't, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, so we got the motion, we got the second. Uh, any more conversation? Johanna?
Nope. I thought we gave it a second still, my bad.
Okay, so we got a third. All right. Now we will go through that vote, and this time we'll just start with Bruce again.
Hi.
And Fred?
Hi.
And Jesse, or Angus, rather.
Hi.
And Jesse?
Hi.
And Johanna?
Hi.
And Jara?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, that's unanimous. We have a newly constituted Housing Subcommittee.
Thank you.
All right. And DRB with Karen having left the board. Uh, we will need to vote a new representative to the Design Review Board for Jara and Angus. We are sort of statutorily required to vote a member to participate with the Design Review Board. Um, and they, I I think they have an infrequent schedule of meetings, depending on if there's something they need to talk about. They deal with a lot of signage downtown. And they also review other projects downtown with more of a architectural design conversation than, I mean, that's kind of more where they focus their discussion. We have a broader conversation. Their recommendations are just that, they are not binding. So that may be another area of interest for you guys to 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 choose to participate. Nate, anything you would add to that?
No, you know, I was gonna also mention, in addition to, you know, voting annually for officers, there is this CPA committee and other Board and Committee Liaison.
Well, we keep losing Nate.
So that committee. Yeah, so we do need a CPA rep possibly for this coming season. In addition to, in addition to the Designer Review Board, so those are things just to consider. And if you have questions, you can always ask staff or another board member, but I, you know, Angus and Jara came in for orientation. We did mention that, described those two other, you know, the Designer Review Board and CPA Committee. I think, you know, it's a conversation we could put on the agenda in August for the board.
Right, and I was on the CPA Committee for at least one, maybe two years. It's a, it's a feel-good committee, because they give away money to worthy town initiatives. And it it mostly meets through the through the fall. So the sooner we can get that person appointed, the more they can be part of the process for that group. All right. Now we're up to Report of Chair. I guess my only report or my only thing I was gonna mention was I wanted, I want to publicly thank Karen for her service on the board. I'm sorry, she isn't listening at the moment. I think a couple of us reached out by email to her and thanked her, but you know, it's always hard to have transitions, but she seemed to enjoy her time on the board, and she seems to be still happy to participate in other parts of town life, so. Welcome, Jara and Angus, and thank you, Karen. All right, Nate, anything from staff?
Uh, yeah, a few things. I I would recommend not having a July 3rd.
Oh, yeah, July 30th meeting.
30th meeting? Yeah, frozen.
All right, anybody?
I know July 30th meeting. We will be meeting August 6th, and there'll be a public hearing for the zoning amendments for inclusionary zoning and accessory dwelling units, so we meet the following week anyways. Uh, and then, you know, we'll meet on August 20th, so um, you know, Doug may be gone, Johanna on July 30th, and I think just, you know, we don't necessarily have any business. On August 6th, we could also talk about the North Amherst overlay after the public hearing. So we have, you know, we have, I think we have the ability to not miss a B if we don't meet on July 30th.
Jesse?
Uh, just for the record, I'll be away the 6th, so I can try and make it, but unlikely. Not sure it matters, but.
Okay.
If you have any comments on, sorry, if you have any comments on, you know, the zoning amendments, Jesse, just you can always email staff.
Jara?
Um, thank you, and I I apologize if these don't need to be asked here, but uh, do we know if Angus and I are gonna be able to vote on those issues on August 6th?
On the zoning amendments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then do we have the date selected for when we will have our board elections?
I had made a note to myself that maybe August 20th would be the meeting where we'd have an agenda item to discuss. You know, it doesn't have, we don't have to take a vote that night, but it would be a an agenda item to discuss, you know, officers and committee representatives or liaisons, and then maybe the vote actually doesn't happen until September, but at least we have that conversation.
Great, okay. That sounds, that sounds great. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have, um, I was gonna mention that, you know, the Housing Production Plan, the board voted for it. It goes to Town Council, I think, next week. So I think I'll be there for that. And then if it, you know, if it moves forward, I would recommend the Housing Production or the Housing Trust and Planning Board, maybe having some part of a combined meeting to talk about the plan and how we divide responsibilities or strategies, or just understand how each one will approach approach it. Yeah, I think I'm
You've dropped out, Nate.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was thinking, I've spoken with Greg Rochaine, the planner who staffs the trust, and we were thinking maybe in October, it would be a good time for the Trust and Planning Board to have you know, a combined meeting, at least for some point, you know, it could just be an hour, one evening to talk about the Housing Production Plan and how we want to approach its strategies and its action steps.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have anything else this evening.
All right. Anyone else have anything before we adjourn? All right, time is 9:11, and thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Oh, you're so welcome. We'll see you soon.
All right, good night.
Yeah, you too. Bye.
Bye.
Stop recording.